All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, approval of the October agenda. Looks like we have, I think, the shortest agenda I think I've ever seen since I've been on this. Any changes, Joe, for the agenda?
No, sir.
Alright, so just a motion for approval of the agenda.
So move.
Mr. Mifflin motion?
Yes.
And I need a second?
Second.
Second by, was that Mr. Vest?
Duwan.
Duwan, sorry, Duwan. Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Items for postponement or withdrawal. Well, we got the one postponement, which is the only thing that was on the agenda, Village of Falls Creek. And so that's it. There's no other, anything else to even talk about. So we'll just, I guess, just skip down to the next thing. There's nothing consent eligible. So we have no consent agenda. Losing my baby. And then under new business, the only thing we had was PDP 2020-41, Villages of Creek amended master plan. That's postponed. Joe, I don't like, we'll probably hear that next month?
Likely.
Okay.
Yep.
And then under other business, because again, I promised everybody, we will be out of here and done no later than 6:45. So under other business, solar zoning ordinance, HB55 training, and Matt, if I'm not mistaken, is going to cover that, correct?
Yes.
Alright, it's all yours, Matt.
Alright, thank you. So, just so we can make sure we give everyone, everyone who worked on this model ordinance credit. This model ordinance that we sent to you all in the packet was created by the Kentucky Resources Council earlier this year. And, and what they did was they looked at best practices around the country, and then tried to tailor those to what, what fits with, you know, Kentucky zoning law, things of that nature, and then the Bluegrass region. So as far as their goals, obviously with, with the solar ordinance, their, their main goal is to encourage the appropriate sighting of solar facilities. So what we mean by sighting is, you know, what it, what are, what are appropriate locations? And then, once you've chosen an appropriate location, you know, how should, how should the facility sit on that land? The other goal would be to, was to protect the rights of landowners to the use and enjoyment of their land. So both the, the landowners who own the site that's to be developed, as well as the neighbors, you know, their enjoyment of their land as well. So this model ordinance, I'm, I'm not necessarily suggesting the specific numbers or specific regulations that it talks about. We're just talking about, about the model ordinance, and they intend for it to be a framework to provide suggestions to planning commissions and local governments. And they do recommend that, you know, we, we tailor, if, should we adopt an ordinance, that we tailor it to what, what best suits our location, our locality. So we're going to start by, by talking about definite, some definitions to make sure that we are all on the same page, and, and discussing things using the same language. Helps, you know, to, to keep things clear. So when we talk about solar energy systems, it, it's really just sort of an overarching term. You know, it, it could be things that are for electricity generation. It could be for things that are for consumption transmission. It could be even for, for thermal applications sometimes. You know, particularly in the Southwest, you might see systems of mirrors that are collecting the solar energy, you know, to, to heat water or, or steam and things of that nature. So under, under that sort of overarching definition for our purposes, the, the model ordinance breaks it into three categories. You've got integrated solar energy systems. And the, the easiest way to remember that is, you know, the word integrated is very important. So if it's an integrated, you know, solar roof, you know, the roof material itself would be made of, of solar panels or, or solar energy system of some kind. It wouldn't just be a roof with mounted solar panels. So that, that, that's an example of integrated solar systems. They have to be indistinguishable from the, the rest of the, the building materials for that structure. Rooftop solar is exactly what it sounds like, and, and what we have an example of here in the picture. It's solar panels that would be mounted onto the roof of a, a house, a carport garage, commercial, industrial building, anything like that. And then the third type would be ground mounted solar systems. You know, these are, you know, you can, you've probably seen some of them around, around the Bluegrass region already. And, and they are expected to continue to, to come here and be developed. But they're usually, I think about fifteen, twenty feet tall, you know, and they're usually angled so that they face the sun. They're anchored into the ground. Usually, I think, the webinar they were talking about, at least six feet, usually with some concrete. So, when we talk about even the, the ground mounted ones, and, and those will be the main focus of this model ordinance. Those are further broken down in the model ordinance into, into three categories. Small facilities would have a footprint of less than 2,500 square feet. Intermediate ones would have a footprint of between 2,500 square feet and ten acres. And large scale would be anything larger than ten acres. Just for, for scale, Jay with our GIS department has put together this map that's on the screen now, just to give you all an idea of what some of those scales look like. So if you kind of see in the bottom left, he put a little, little image of downtown Georgetown. If you think about the area in the middle of all, all four crosswalks, that's about 2,500 square feet. So anything about that size or smaller in the model ordinance, we consider that small. Near the bottom in the center, there's a box that's a little bit, a little bit bigger than, than a block. That would be about ten acres. And then if you look up in the top right for scale, the, the rectangle that's a little bit smaller than, than the, the land that Toyota encompasses is about a thousand acres. I, I chose a thousand acres just because I know at one time, you know, I had a discussion with, with some folks who, who were inquiring about what our ordinances, or how our ordinance is handled. Facilities like this, and, and they were, I think they're, they were largely interested in a facility that was about a thousand, maybe 1,200 acres in size. So, you know, if we think about something like that coming to, to Scott County, you know, this, that, that would be about the size facility they would be probably interested in. A few more definitions to go through. So some, some, some items are exempt. So if any, any municipally owned energy provider, and any public utilities that are regulated by the Public Service Commission are exempt from our local zoning regulations per KRS 100.324. So if Georgetown started up its own electric company, or like I said, if KU came in and wanted to do a solar farm in Scott County, any, any ordinance that we would adopt, they would, they would be exempt. So that takes us to this second item that's here on, on this page. Citing board regulated solar energy systems. So these are our merchant electric generating facilities that are subject to review and approval of what it calls, what, what statute calls the Kentucky State Board of Electric, Electricity Generation and Transmission Citing. And I have the, the state statute number there, KRS 278.700. So in order to fall into this category, they have to be capable of generating 10 megawatts or more. They sell their electricity that they produce in the wholesale market at rates and charges that are not regulated by the Public Service Commission. So this would apply basically to, to any, anyone who would want to build a facility like this. Basically, who would want to build a solar farm if it was greater than 10 megawatts? And it was going to sell on these markets but not be regulated by the Public Service Commission, that's sort of who, who this ordinance are, part of who this ordinance would be tailored to. Just so I can, we can cover why, why it's important. So if we, if we don't, let's say hypothetically, we don't adopt any local regulation, these, these merchant facilities, how they would determine what, what is an appropriate location, and what, you know, setbacks and other things would apply, would be determined by a seven member board that, you know, the statute lays out what that board looks like. It's a seven member board, and only two of whom, two of them would be from Scott County. Three of them would be the Public Service Commissioners. And then the other, the other two would be from the Secretary of Energy and Environment Cabinet, and the Secretary of the Economic Development Cabinet. The only regulations that state statute, statute puts out there are that the, the, the solar panels have to be at least a thousand feet from property boundaries. They have to be 2,000 feet from any residential neighborhood, school, hospital, or nursing home. But they can, but that seven member board, only two of whom would be from, from Scott County, have the power to waive those setbacks. And there's not really conditions, you know, for them to make that decision based on, it could just be, I don't know, it could be, it could be anything. The, the applicant could say that they just want it. So adopting local regulations, you know, would give the planning commission the, the, and, and the Board of Adjustment, sort of the, the authority to, to have some control over how these sites are chosen and how the sites are designed. I think the, the important part there is just that is, the, the most important part is that, you know, we would have local control over what happens in our community, rather than only having sort of two-sevenths control. So the, the model ordinance goes on to discuss, you know, who, who would basically, who the, the ordinance would apply to. So it, it does have a section that exempts things, projects that have already been constructed or have already begun physical construction. It also talks about how if, you know, you have a facility that's in place, and you're only increasing the size of it by five percent or less of the original footprint overall, that wouldn't be subject to that ordinance. You wouldn't have to, you know, go and go back to the Board of Adjustment for approval of your conditional use permit under that, under that situation. Routine maintenance and repair also wouldn't be subject to requiring a new application. One, one thing that was a little bit interesting that the ordinance did put in there, that they did put in the model ordinance, was that they did make or put it into the model ordinance that exempt solar energy systems. Have to provide the Planning Commission and Fiscal Court with information on service facilities that have been located on or relocated on private property. So this goes back to those ones, you know, the municipality-owned energy systems as, and, and the ones that are regulated by the Public Service Commission. So if KU, you know, created a new facility, even though they wouldn't necessarily have to come to the Planning Commission for approval on that, they would have to provide information to the Planning Commission on those facilities. Which, just like when we have cell tower applications, it's, it's useful to know where those are, and, and the size and scope of them, because it helps us to figure out, you know, if we've got maybe too much clustering of them in, in one area, things of that nature. So, like, like with a lot of ordinance changes, they've got, they did provide a, a use table. So this, this use table basically states whether, whether, use tables like this state, whether a, a use is permitted, conditionally permitted, or prohibited in different zoning districts. They've got, they're sort of generally broken down into residential, commercial, industrial, and agricultural. And our ordinance has more specific categories under all of those. But basically, for when, when it's an accessory use, if you're, if you're doing something that's, you know, on a house, a rooftop addition to a house, if you're doing, you know, changing your roof entirely to make it entirely solar panel as an integrated, regardless of your zoning district, the model ordinance says, yes, go ahead. That should be, that should be fine. You don't need to go to the Board of Adjustment for that. It's allowed. If you're, start getting into the ground mounted ones, that's where you can see from the table that some of these, they do recommend that we send them to the Board of Adjustment for approval, particularly when they get to that intermediate scale, which, as the model ordinance defines, is anything over 2,500 square feet. If it's in a residential or agricultural area, they say, the model ordinance says that needs to go to the Board of Adjustment for a conditional use permit. And then basically, anything that hits that large scale threshold, regardless of zoning district, they recommend taking that to the Board of Adjustment. So when, when we talk about accessory uses, we're talking about uses where there's already a primary use on the site. So if it's residential, that's typically, you know, a house. If it's commercial, there's, you know, there's a business on the property, things like that. When we go to the next table, then we start talking about primary uses. So by definition, the, the main use of the site would be solar panels. So as you can see, that doesn't apply to the integrated or the rooftop. So those are left off of this proposed table. And so then we just really talk about the ground mounted. And, and as you can see, the permitted versus conditionally permitted are, are the same on, on this table as they were on the previous one. But it is, it is important to, to make sure that we have a distinction between the primary and accessory. So generally, for roof, for the integrated and rooftops, the, the model ordinance has a very, very light touch as far as how those are regulated. It has some language about, you know, if, if somebody wants to work with their neighbor to make sure that they've got a solar access easement of sorts, you know, they can, they can do that, and they can record those at, at the courthouse as you would with, with any legal agreement. You know, the, the ordinance, the model ordinance talks about how, you know, tree removal should be, should be minimal. We, we always want to preserve trees and especially preserve mature, mature trees as often as we can. As far as height restrictions, the model ordinance does have some language in there that, that allows for, for these types to exceed the maximum height of the zoning district by as many as five feet. Which, I, I don't know, I kind of, I go back and forth on, but I could see how if there's an existing house that, you know, is at that maximum, you know, thirty feet in height that we have in our residential zoning districts, you know, and they want to do a, a rooftop mounted one, that we would want to give them that clearance to do that. It's, you know, adding, adding solar panels to the roofs of houses, I'm, I'm fairly certain would, would go towards meeting some of our goals in the comprehensive plan. Also, these integrated ones should not be illuminated at all, and should be designed a way to prevent offsite glare. In our local historic district along Main Street in Georgetown, they would have to go through the review process through the Board of Adjustment. Almost just as, they would have to do that with, with any modifications to the exterior of houses anyway. So, now we're, we're going to go back to the, the ground mounted ones. So the, these are where the, as I mentioned before, this is where the bulk of the discussion in the ordinance is. So we've got some of the same things about solar access and tree removal. As far as lighting for these, it does allow for some lighting, but it's very specific about the light being directed downward, cutoff features, you know, where they can, where possible, they should use motion sensors to limit the amount of light that might disturb neighboring property owners. It, it also makes specific note, obviously, that none of these lighting restrictions should be, should preclude the installation of lighting that may be required by the Federal Aviation Administration. As far as height requirements, it sets a maximum height of twenty feet. Now, that doesn't include, you know, the utility poles, batteries, transformers, things like that. Those would basically just follow the same height restrictions as other buildings and structures in, in whatever zoning district it may, the site, the development might be in. It does sort of allow for, or I guess not allow, it, it, it lays out a way that variances could be approved to the height. It specifies that a finding would have to be made that the, the structure would be more productive, or use less land, or, or other things. And I think that's actually kind of nice to include the specific findings that, you know, the, the board or, or the Planning Commission would, would need to make. So the, the model ordinance has very different citing restrictions than, I guess, sort of the KRS 278 has. They recommend at least fifty feet from property lines where it joins residential or agricultural land, and thirty feet where it adjoins commercial, business, industrial, office, or institutional uses. They also mention at least fifty feet from the center line of any public road. Although I would probably recommend if we were adopting something like this, we would want at least fifty feet from, from the right of way line itself, rather than the center line of the road. They, they, model ordinance also talks about these intermediate or large scale facilities not being closer than a hundred feet from any residence. That's kind of similar to what we do with the the cell towers. We have specific heights that they need to be from the property lines, and then greater protections from, from residences themselves. Neighbors can agree to waive setbacks if, if they, if they provide that in writing. And then setbacks are not required where, you know, maybe two property owners are leasing their property to the developer. We wouldn't require the setbacks to be followed along those shared property boundaries in those cases. There's also provisions for the setbacks to be reduced if there's adequate screening, you know, mature tree lines with, with significant undergrowth. And, but sort of on the, on the flip side, if the, the terrain or other things warrant it, you know, the, the board, the Board of Adjustment would have the ability to sort of expand those setbacks or require additional screening if the situation necessitated. So it's, it's fairly generic as far as the screening recommendations. It, it just talks about it, the need for it to be effectively screened from properties zone for residential use. There is quite a bit of discussion in the model ordinance about farmland protection and wanting to minimize the amount of compaction that occurs. A lot of that language is, is in there because, you know, particularly in the, the southern half of Scott County, there's, there's lots of prime farmland. Or, and, and maybe even in some cases, what's considered farmland of statewide importance. And, and the intent of that, of all that language in, in the model ordinance is to protect those lands from compaction, which, which really hurts its future use as agricultural land once the life of the, the solar energy system has passed. As far as decommissioning, the, you know, the, all of these projects eventually reach the end of their useful life. And so decommissioning should begin no less than, than twelve months after they've stopped generating electricity or thermal energy. For the smaller systems, the, the model ordinance says that they, they should be completely removed within six months of the, the start of that decommissioning process. For the larger systems that are approved by conditional use permit through the Board of Adjustment, it just calls for it to follow their specific decommissioning plan, and, and we'll talk about that here in, in just a minute. So the, the model ordinance, before I go into this next section, it, its main goal was to figure out how, what, what the best method for having hearings on this, on the use of the site was. It wasn't necessarily about, you know, the, the detailed design of these facilities. It was more about, you know, if somebody wants to come and get the, and, and apply for this. You know, we don't necessarily just want to make it a permitted use everywhere in some situations like agricultural and residential. And then, when they get to these large, over ten acres in size facilities, you know, they need to go to the Board of Adjustment to get their conditional use permit, have that public hearing about the use, and, and allow the public to see at least some of their conceptual plans. And then, you know, in our community, how we would treat it after that is, you know, after they get their conditional use permit, they would come to the Planning Commission, and they would show all the, the final, not final, but they would show, you know, the, the, the construction plans. It would be a, a more finalized version than what they would go to with the, the Board of Adjustment. With that being said, they do, the, the model ordinance asks a lot of information from the applicants. Some of these I'm, I'm going to skip because they're kind of basic. They ask for some contact information. They ask for a topographic map, show of the, of the site as it's, as it is today. Vegetative cover, flood plains, watersheds, things like that. They ask for a conceptual description as well as a conceptual site plan. So the site plan, obviously, like we're used to with our development plans, gives you that top, that overhead view of what the site will look like, whereas the conceptual plan, the conceptual description, rather, that's going to give you the, the Board of Adjustment more of, a more, I guess, verbal description that gives them things like the heights, the total area covered, the number of modules, whether they're going to be sort of fixed in place, or whether they're going to sort of turn to track the sun, things like that. They also ask for the, the NRCS map, identifying prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance, as well as information on things like endangered species. Has a requirement for the, for them to demonstrate that their, their project wouldn't have a disproportionate effect upon low-income communities or communities of color. And then it also asks for their, for them to prepare a decommissioning plan, and has to be prepared by a professional engineer and updated every seven years. And what that needs to say is it needs to have the anticipated life of the project as well as sort of what conditions would, would occur that would, that would trigger the decommissioning. Would have to estimate the costs of decommissioning, so the removal of all the equipment and the foundations. You know, basically, as best as they can, returning that site. If, if it was an agricultural site, turning that site back into usable farmland. And then it has to, it has to include the estimated salvage value of any equipment. It has to include the, the manner in which the project will be decommissioned, so timelines, how they're going to remove the structures, how they're going to re-vegetate and restore the property, who's responsible for the decommissioning. And then they will have to demonstrate that, that they're going to provide some sort of financial assurance to make sure that that decommissioning happens. So some communities require a performance bond to be put up, basically, at the time construction starts. That, that takes into account that entire decommissioning cost minus the, the salvage value of the equipment. They would have to provide a copy of any lease containing specific agreements regarding the decommissioning. Ideally, in, in my mind, ideally, they would not try to leave the decommissioning up to the property owners if, if it was on some sort of lease agreement. In addition to, to all of that, yeah, the, the model ordinance asks for them to provide proof of insurance covering the installation and operation. Description of how they're going to minimize erosion and sedimentation on the site. Excuse me. I guess if, if in some cases, they're going to, also, if they're going to apply for a construction certificate pursuant to KRS 278, they can submit a copy of that application instead of basically that lengthy list of things that I've just gone through for the conditional use permit application. Sorry, I should have brought some water down with me. So the, the last thing that the, that the ordinance, of the model ordinance talks about is just that, the, the notification for the Board of Adjustment hearing would be consistent with the notification for other conditional use permit applications. I think that's, I think that's, I don't know, I would, I would have considered that to be somewhat self-explanatory. But they, they did include that for, for clarification. And that, that concludes sort of my, my summary of, of the ordinance. Obviously, I, I do recommend that everyone read through it in full. It, it is very interesting. I think this is something that is important for us to, to consider. And I, I didn't know if you, if we, I think we should maybe open this up to some, to some discussion. Or if you want, I have just a couple of questions, because I, I would like some feedback, I guess, as far as how the, how the commission feels about. how the how the commission feels about, um I guess, the model ordinance, if there's anything, any items that they liked or didn't like about it.
I'll open the floor up for commission questions.
Matt, I've got a couple of questions for you. On the top of page four, which is uh section three B, uh it says that anyone that has already started construction would be uh considered legally non-conforming to in the ordinance that we passed. Do we have anybody that has started uh any type of solar farm in Scott County?
Um I'm not aware of any larger intermediate. I'm I am aware that there are a couple uh small ground mounted solar solar panels that have been put up by uh, you know, mostly farm owners um here and there.
But really just cemetery road, would they have had to got a permit for that or because it's just a few panels, they wouldn't have needed a permit?
Yeah, um under under our current ordinance, they would not and likely under, you know, if we adopted the model ordinance, they also would not need a a conditional use permit.
Add on a a large scale project. Could we say how we wanted the uh the base material to look either gravel or or vegetation? Uh I wouldn't want to ten acres of concrete there that would uh have extreme water runoff. So can can we make those uh restrictions on something like this?
Yeah, uh I I think we could. I mean, I think if we drafted, you know, if we adopted the the model warrants, I think we could. I think we could incorporate that in there. Um I I also, I I'd just like to point out, I don't think the, you know, if we had an applicant, I don't think that they would want to concrete or pave ten acre area either. I don't, I don't think they would have any interest in that.
So I know I've been hearing for the last probably year and a half that the solar farm was coming. Do we have a an area where we think or we know it's coming?
I don't, um I mean, I've I guess heard a rumor that maybe somewhere west of of Georgetown, but I'm I I've not, nobody's ever told me anything specific. Um I know they have, they have one that's, I don't know if it's being built or or what. Um I know Mercer County uh has one. Um I think Clark County has a probably would be considered an intermediate sized one. And and in some of the, I guess, the last two meetings that they had at the the Bluegrass ad for the Regional Planning uh Mission, they make it sound as though, you know, we are going to see more of these. There are uh some, I guess, some of our surrounding states have um I I don't know, I I guess you'd maybe call them green energy initiatives. Uh and so the the electricity providers are looking to get more green energy into their grid. Uh and Kentucky seems to be uh an ideal location.
I I know of a couple people whose farms they may go on because I've heard there's been already discussion with some property owners about a solar farm, so. So I knew, well, again, I don't know all the details. I just sounds like there's already a lot of plans in in the works. Any other questions by the commission? Steven?
There were, or there've already been a couple of companies that have approached people. The last one that was here, I think they finally they they held their hands up and pulled out for now. They, if somebody approached them, they might. I I'm sure that I'm sure that the COVID epidemic has probably made things pretty difficult for them in terms of trying to meet with people.
Could see that.
But I've I've also received another packet or another letter from a from a new company that's interested in a solar farm here. So this would be the third one that has made inquiries.
Well, I know my initial thought was, you know, if we had it on the furthest edge of the county, that wouldn't be bad. And my understanding, what I've been told so far is it actually has to be fairly close to the city because, of course, the transportation of the energy. You can't build it, let's say, on the far north side of the county in the middle of nowhere because it's got to be fairly close to, like I said, Georgetown to to get the energy um used in Georgetown, if that makes sense.
It doesn't have to be near Georgetown, just has to be near a transmission line. If you're you're near a high powered transmission line, you could be in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah, but I heard if, again, if you put it real far away, the expense of running that transmission line from, let's say, the northern part of the county to Georgetown would be pretty expensive, Stephen. At least that's what I've been told.
No, that that most of the companies we were talking to, uh they're just selling it back on the grid. It could, it it could ultimately be used in New Jersey.
Really? Okay, see, you you know probably a little more about it than I do then.
New Jersey, places where electricity is extremely high.
Yeah. There's a couple major transmission lines that cross the county.
Okay.
So, you know.
Yep.
I had a quick question, Matt.
Yeah.
You said that like K U would be exempt because they're regulated by the Public Service Commission? Can we not regulate those utilities?
No, the only, the only thing we can regulate, I guess, as far as a company's on the Public Service Commission is if they built like an office building. But anything for like power generation or transmission, we have no say so over.
No say.
Do they not, are they not in that business? I mean, do they just private companies looking?
Yeah, I mean, so, yeah, the one, the ones that I guess that this ordinance would apply to as far as solar farms are I what what they call merchant, merchant uh utilities or merchant uh farms, like they would, yeah, they would basically be an independent company that comes in, build it, and they would just sell it on on the market, there or sell the energy on the market. They wouldn't they wouldn't have really anything to do with the Public Service Commission.
Okay, so K U's really not interested in developing these. They just want to buy the
I mean, they might.
Okay, I think K U is. I think they have a couple of uh K U and maybe Touchstone Energy both rather have some pilot programs that they're experimenting with. They just haven't pulled the trigger to go with a large scale project. And I might be wrong. I think somebody's building one down around uh down near the Oahu River. Trying to think where might be Davies County or something like that, but I think they're putting in a thousand, eight hundred thousand acre solar farm there.
Did you guys, uh, did anyone have any thoughts on on the setbacks? Then the model ordinance, they talk about fifty feet from a residential and agricultural property. Then, I mean, that is, would be consistent with our already existing setbacks in A one district.
That just seems really close. Would we require some vegetation? I I would hate, I mean, I'm in Bradford, so there's, you can't build one anywhere near my house because I'm surrounded already. But man, fifty foot from somebody else's yard, you know, on the country, I'd be kind of upset. Would we, of course, we would requi- I I think that seems really close. What everybody else's thought?
Where would the water go off the big, off the big ones, Matt? Off the big solar panels?
Yeah, so I mean, in in most of them, uh, most of these sites, the underneath the panels, it's still, you know, either gravel or or maybe they plant some grasses. Um so, you know, the the water would come off and it would basically just be on on the ground as if it was, I guess, almost as if there wasn't anything there.
But would that cause a problem to a fifty foot from a a home? Would that cause any problem?
Oh, um, I mean, ideally, we, you know, we would, uh, when they come for their preliminary development plan, we would look to address that uh and make sure that they wouldn't be increasing the runoff on another property. Yes.
I'm kind of like Mark. I think it's a little too close.
Yeah. And if like Ja- uh Mr. Stone, I know you've got, you know, you've got some farmland and property and God, that would be really fifty foot from the property line. Just, I think, would, I don't know, just, would you think, Mr. Stone, that's pretty close to the property line?
Seems to be.
Well, do, is there a general Matt, or if you don't mind researching, if you're a little more of what, because some of the stands, standards are national.
Yeah, I can, I can definitely look at that.
Is that, like I said, I mean, if I were out in the middle of nowhere and and, you know, loving my farm, which one day maybe I can do that. Um I sure the heck wouldn't want a solar farm right next to me. I mean, I'm, I don't think they make any noise that I'm aware of, but they sure the heck aren't pretty. I mean, I don't I don't think solar farms are pretty at all. And I just, you know, to have one close and and of course I would want some, you know, um divide from, let's say, I owned a farm in the middle of nowhere and all of a sudden they wanted to plop, you know, a hundred acres of solar farm right next to me. I sure would want some divide between my heirs with regards to shrubbage and trees and all that good stuff. So I didn't have to look at that stuff all day long.
Yeah.
Well, and again, that would depend on the uh the direction of the panels. You know, if you were on the backside of the panel, large trees wouldn't be a problem, but if you're on the front side, uh, they're not going to walk a very high bush in there because they
Right.
pick up that sun. Look, uh, next time you go to Mount Sterling or uh Winchester, look at that big solar panel farm on the right uh on I sixty four uh as your head in east there. Check out the setbacks and all.
Yeah, I'd kind of be interested what other communities have as far as their requirement on setbacks. You know, if if they're a hundred foot, if they're two hundred foot, I mean,
Yeah.
it'd be kind of interesting to see whatever everybody else is doing.
Yeah, I mean, and and in some ways, if if the setbacks are at least somewhat larger, that does allow you to go maybe
higher with
some larger, larger trees along the perimeter.
Right. Good point, Matt.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts or comments? We're going over our time. I said six forty five and it's six forty seven. Well, everybody, please take time and and look, um, do some of your own research. Uh, we don't need to make questions or thoughts or anything tonight. I think Matt just want to get the presentation out there so we can start thinking about this future ordinance discussions. And then we could probably talk a little bit about it next month, Matt. Is that the thought?
Yeah, we can, we can talk about it more next month, for sure.
And just for the record, uh, Mrs. Singer is absent today. Mrs. Mizella is absent. Your Moran is absent for the record and for the minutes. Anything else we've got to cover? Updated previous approved projects. We don't need to do that. Joe, any thoughts, concerns, comments? Anything we need to know about as a planning commission?
Yeah, just one thing, the small cell tower ordinance that we had the public hearing on, the city has looked at it and they sent it to their expert attorney on small cell towers in Frankfurt. Her name's um Linda Aine. And she had a bunch of changes that she was suggesting. Uh I guess she's kind of the industry expert, a long preamble. Um she she's recommending changing the the fee to a flat fee per tower, two hundred and seventy dollars per tower. Adding a time clock for staff review and a couple other things. I think they're made for enough that we need to bring it back for a public hearing. So they asked asked us to bring it back in November.
I think that's fine.
So we'll have it in November. She also sent it out to Crown, ask Crown Castle, A T and T and Verizon for comments. So we're going to get written comments back from cell providers. And they may attend a public hearing in November, so we'll probably get more input. I think overall it's better and it's it, I guess it it conforms with case law for so.
Thanks, Joe. I did notice uh two things I think we did need to cover. A, there's a Mr. Schaefer on here with us. Mr. Schaefer, did you have anything to say or did you have the question? Just muted himself. Oh, there you go.
No, I'm just with the Boy Scouts. With uh
Mr. Chairman.
Fifteen.
Yes, Mr. Mifflin.
Uh, Robert Schaefer is a is a scout with the Boy Scout troop that I work with, Troop two fifteen here in Georgetown. He's working uh towards his Eagle rank. And one of those requirements is a citizenship and the community merit badge. And one of those requirements is a attend municipal bill uh meeting. And so he was uh uh sitting in with us tonight. Joe was kind enough to come to our meeting um last year or earlier this year and talk about the uh relationship between the uh Planning Commission and the landfill. And then Robert called back with the meeting here, so.
Joining us, Mr. Schaefer. We appreciate it.
Yeah. Glad you made it, Robert.
It's good to be here.
Joe, the only other thing I think we did, we, are we going into closed session, Mr. Perkins?
Well, then we, I suggested it, but um Charlie and I met with the attorney that was appointed by our, by K E C O, our insurance.
Okay.
Carrier. Um, we went through the lawsuit, uh gave him our comments. We're meeting again on site on October fourteenth. So I don't think I really have a whole lot to update everybody on unless you all have specific questions. If you do, we probably should go into executive session. Otherwise, I could just update you when we kind of get our responses together.
If I might suggest, Mr. Chairman, uh Joe's correct. We've gone over quite a bit of it. But I may be a little Pollyanna-ish, but I think we'll learn a lot more about what the plaintiff is actually after. Uh just reading the complaint, I mean, it it's it's highly destructive of things.
I read over it uh until I think my head was about to explode. I would agree with you. It's all over the place. I really wasn't even sure well, what the exact complaint was.
Well, after the fourteenth, uh and we meet out there uh with all the attorneys, uh plaintiffs and defendants and Joe, we'll know a whole lot better about what's going on.
When you say out there Lexington or at the farm?
No, at the site on North twenty five.
If you don't mind, Joe, I mean, if, send me the information, time, and you said the fourteenth. I don't have my planner in front of me. But if you don't mind, send me an email on the time and the date, and if I could join, I'd probably like to walk with you.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, and if there's no nothing else uh to cover, Joe, Charlie, commission, anything?
No, sir.
Yeah, it looks like we're, oh, you got one more, Joe?
Well, I just want to remind everybody, I sent out the link to A P A Ohio uh zoning workshop. It's going on all this month. It's twenty five dollars for non-A P A members. So if you just wanted to uh get some more H B fifty five hours, they're going to be live in October, then they're being archived for the rest of the year. So you'll be able to access them and get get hours uh at your convenience. So if anybody wants to do that, just let me know and I can sign you up.
And the commission, like for the, especially for the newer members of the planning and zoning, will pay for the training.
Okay, correct.
Yep, just let Joe know and Duan, and he'll he'll make sure it's paid for.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
That's it.
Other than that, that we're eight minutes past due. So we get, I think, uh per Charlie Perkins, we get about an hour worth of credit on those solar panels.
That sounds only fair.
Thank you. I'll have a good evening.